I do close my day.
So it's five thirty.
Mirrors on my car, they're powered, so it doesn't matter, but just in case I. Tell me one little warranty or something.
Ron, I'm gonna go ahead and.
Oh, I apologize.
No, that's okay, Ron, that's fine. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order since the chair isn't here, um, it's five thirty. So, um, but we do not have a chair, so I think the first order of business that we should do is. Temporarily elect a, a chair for tonight's meeting to, to run the meeting, so does anybody? Want that honor or would like to volunteer somebody?
Dominate Kim.
I don't want that. I don't want it, thank you, I've been there.
My only comment, I think, is that it, it shouldn't be a city council representative, which Kathy Montal.
Oh, good, thank you.
John would be a good.
Okay, then, we nominate John Leo.
Okay, fine, does anybody second that? Second, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? John, you can take over running the meeting.
Yeah, well.
I will defer to you, but if you need any help, I will.
Once, once we get past the roll call, I think we'll be okay.
I will take role, Kim Morris, Kathy Montal.
Here.
Sue Stewart is absent, John Leo, you, Ron Turner.
Here.
Janie Jenkins.
Here.
We have a form.
Okay, first order of business would be approval of the minutes from the October meeting. Does everyone have a chance to read through any changes, comments, annotations? How about a motion then to approve?
That we approve, minutes as written, my second.
Roll call or? I consent this.
You can consensus.
Everybody and, and, and everybody in favor?
Yes.
Any, anybody against? All right, minutes are approved. So the first and only item on the agenda. You would like to walk us through it?
Yeah, let me just, uh, scroll down to their site plan.
We're gonna do public comment.
I think that's probably the meeting, but formally, I guess we should say, are there any comments from the public? On items that are not included in today's agenda?
So Adam Lowery is the property owner here on Traverse Street. And this is the site plan for his property, what he's asking the, um, zoning board appeals for is an addition onto the back of his garage. It is a two-story addition with some habitable space on the second floor. Uh, and we can see the property line out here, the existing garage is already located beyond the setback for an accessory building, which is this line here. And he's asking for an addition on the back of the property, and this portion of the garage here is the portion that does not comply. And so he's asking for dimensional variance, be able to go back. You can hand it over to Adam to tell us why he wants to do what he wants to do, and then after that, we actually have a public. Adam?
Sure, should I use the microphone?
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and do that. There should be a public there.
All right. Hey, everyone, Adam Lowery, thanks for having me here today, uh, yeah, the purpose of the garage expansion is really, um. Primarily to be able to put two cars, uh, in my garage, I have a one-car garage, um. And this would allow parking, it's actually in tandem, um, but that's kind of the only way to do it because, uh. I can't ex- I can't expand, uh, width flies either way, so. I thought that would be sort of the least intrusive way to just add on to the back of the garage. Um, there is an unfinished space above the garage right now, um. You can see that in the existing plans, it's, it's basically just a room, um. And there's nothing up there, uh, that would get expanded, um, and. My thought was to start using that as an office, um, so I, um. I have a small office in the house, but, uh, particularly in the summer when we have lots of people around, it's a pretty distracting place to work, so. Um, that's why you see in the plans, um, the, the expansion of the top floor and the addition of a couple of items there. Any questions I can answer?
So. I'm just.
I do.
Go ahead.
In the documents that we got, thank you. Um, it looked like you were just adding for, uh, asking to expand for a one-car garage, I don't see anything where you were justifying. A built-up in, uh, upstairs part.
Right.
Um, okay, I'm, I'm.
The application, your justification, all relates to a one-car garage. There's no mention of building out a livable space up front.
Okay, um. You, I, I may not understand exactly how this all works, um, but.
That's okay.
Adding the space on the back of the garage on the floor plan, it's already a two-story garage. So. I suppose I could add twelve feet onto the back of the garage and, and not, and then create a roof on this first floor. Um, that's actually more expensive than just, just adding both floors on the back. Um, and since there's already, uh. I'm not sure I know the definition of a habitable space, but there is a room above the current garage, so if you call that a habitable space.
It was unfinished and you're looking to finish, so you're looking to.
Uh, yeah, I think over time, um, I would like to, to finish that, these plans are just a sort of rough in, um, and to make that an option.
So, my other question is, if, why can you not fit two cars and I see the door on the left-hand side in front?
Mm-hmm.
But if you truly wanted to fit two cars in, you could expand that door to one big garage door, because I have one that's less than twenty feet. That can't fit two cars.
Uh, I suppose that would be true, it would require, um, repaving part of my driveway. Garage doesn't, the, uh, the driveway itself doesn't extend all the way to the side of the garage, sort of door on the left side. But I suppose with more pavement. And if I opened up. That, I suppose I could do that, but, um, yeah, this would be my preference, because it also provides more choices.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I too have, uh, the same concerns as, um. Him because you are, your application says you want a tandem garage, but there's quite a bit of possible living space above, and that, that's sort of. A discussion point.
Okay, um, yeah, let, let me know, I'm, I'm not familiar with exactly what the potential issue with that is, so. Let me, let me know, I, I'll answer any questions you've got.
Well, along those same lines, my question was going to be, think the, the. The variance for the square that is, he's increasing the non-conformity to me is pretty clear. Habitable space, so wouldn't that then require planning commission approval? What, what do you, where do you cross the line into habitable space, rentable unit, have to agree not to rent it, in-law unit? I'm not sure where the line is in this particular, usually it's very clear, and this one is not clear.
Let's, let's say for the sake of discussion, that the garage wasn't there at all. And that the, the app, an applicant was coming to the city requesting to build a garage that has. Living space or habitable space on the second floor, um, and, and the reason that we use that habitable space line is, um. You, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult, once the structure is up, to stay involved in the process. Because we don't have our own building department. So, um, what can happen is, you know, an applicant comes to the city and says, I want to build a two-story structure. There isn't going to be any living in it at all, it's a garage on the first floor and just second floor for storage. And let's say that we approve it, and then years later, they go to the building department to get their plumbing inspection and their mechanical inspection, inspection. And now there's a bathroom and a kitchen in it, uh, and it's, it can be difficult to stay involved in that process. So we basically just said, if there's space that could be made habitable, we're going to consider it living space for the purpose of zoning. To know what rules are applicable when we would, uh, approve of that. Um, so this structure, uh, this garage, I believe was, um, you know, I have pictures of it, uh, being built. Uh, at least in two thousand and one or prior to. My assumption would be that at the time when they built the garage. Um, that they approved, that they received their appropriate zoning approval at that time. And my under-understanding from looking at our zoning code is that, um, ever since we have allowed accessory structures. And having a second floor, we have had those rules in place. So. I would say that the existing structure met whatever zoning rules were in place at the time when it was. Built and placed on the structure or on the property, and then they have received their approvals at that time, so. Yes, uh, special land use approval is required to build an accessory structure. Um, I would assume that they received that approval when they built this garage originally. Um, and, and that there's probably not a need to revisit that approval process, because they're adding an addition on to it.
Right, but then any caveats that were associated with the zoning at the time still apply?
Any caveats, uh, or conditions that were implemented at the time of approval?
Right.
Would, would be applicable, yes.
But do we know what those are? I'm not picking on anybody, but.
Well, yeah, I, what, what we really could do if we, if we thought that the, the special land use approval and that process was important. To look at any conditions that were implemented at that time, we would need to go back and find the minutes from that meeting and have that discussion. Uh, that would really be a discussion for the planning commission, and if, if their proposed plan. Um, does something that would negatively impact the previous approval. Then the planning commission should readdress that, or they should submit an application to the planning commission for that. So really, we should just look at the request and what it is. In a request for an expansion of space with a portion of that not complying with the zoning code.
Okay.
So we, we really have to. Keep our focus on, do they have a practical difficulty which necessitates a, a dimensional variance for zoning?
Okay, just one last question, the only place that any conditions would apply would be in the minutes?
That's, that's what we would, that would be the appropriate thing to go back and look at.
But they're, they aren't recorded anywhere else.
It's, it's tough to say.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
But that, that's why, that's why I opened with, what the question before us is really, is there a practical difficulty to justify the expansion? You know, a slight increase in the non-conformity in that corner.
We should go back and look at the official records, um, so following this meeting, um, I will look at that and see if the planning commission took any action, what that was. And if there were any conditions, um, and I can talk with Adam. You know, following that and see if it requires any further review and approval beyond myself administratively with the planning commission, if necessary.
But that's beyond power.
That's beyond scope of what we're doing tonight.
So I just wanna be clear, based on a couple of other questions, um. We're not actually changing the front as you see it from the street, that width is the same. So basically, are you moving the, removing the man door and having a bigger garage door then?
No, the front would stay exactly the same, we're basically just taking the back wall off and going twelve feet back into my backyard.
Okay.
Full, two stories of the, of the.
Got it, now, um, so no additional width. Okay, um, now, I, from one. Drawing that I saw, and now I'm not sure I can find it.
But I have problems here if you want.
Oh, okay, there was, it, it looked like the, the back twelve feet extended a little bit more into the setback. Than the existing property, and I don't know if I was misreading the lines, you know, the one we were looking at, yeah, that one was right there.
That's the overhang.
Is it roof overhang?
Uh, that's roof, yeah, that's roof overhang, or the wall itself would be. Or at least that's the way it's just.
Okay, so that, and roof overhang doesn't matter in the, in the setback, right?
We, we have an allowance to roof overhangs, they're allowed to extend up to two feet into a setback, so. I would say as long as that roof overhang isn't more than two feet from the wall of the building, it's reasonable with everything else.
Okay, I can't tell for sure, but as long as you're comfortable.
Yeah, there's, uh, so the roof of the existing structure, um, using this drawing kind of goes like this, it goes from top to bottom. Um, and so that overhang on the setback side of that peaked roof will be exactly the same as the overhang. On the portion in the. The shaded area.
So I've, I've zoomed in quite a bit here, and we can see there is a note, it says assumed one foot six inch overhang or matching existing.
Thank you.
Three sides, so, so it's about an eighteen-inch roof overhang.
Okay, so. Uh, my other question is, and I apologize if this one's in here and I missed it, from the street. What, am I gonna see anything that looks different?
Uh, no, and I, I have a picture if you'd like to see it, um, but from the street, it looks exactly the same.
Okay, so I, that's, I couldn't tell whether the pitch or anything was gonna be different in the back or the front.
No, completely the same, uh, when you look at it from the front, there's two dormers at the upper level.
Mm-hmm.
And then a roof that sort of faces you.
Yes.
And the, the addition will be behind that roof, so you won't, you won't see.
Okay.
One, one change that might be seen from the street. Um, currently, the stairs accessing the second floor, and really, this isn't a full two-story structure, right? The, the roof line is quite low, it's, it's got a second floor, and it's really kind of like a half-story with dormers.
Like I have.
Right now, the existing stairwell that accesses the second floor is on the inside, and he is proposing to move that to an exterior stairwell.
And that, on what side?
It looks like that's going to be on the south side of the building, so it's, it won't, it'll be kind of tucked in between the house and the garage.
Okay.
But that may be seen from the street, but that is one other difference.
It's not hanging, I guess more important is not hanging out on the north.
And I'm getting that purpose of that was just, there's a staircase on the inside of the garage right now, except for, so we're just gonna move it on the outside.
Chair, exit.
Would you be storing your car there in the winter, or will cars be coming and going all winter long? Uh, no, we're generally not here in the winter, so the cars are, I mean, that's, that's the primary purpose is, or one of the primary purposes is to be able to. Right now, I have to pay for storage to, um, store one, I call it, this, one, one of my family, when we are here, we have, you know, two cars, because. Both my wife and I sometimes have to travel for business. Last year, I moved out of the house with a tandem garage. Uh, there's a moisture problem in the winter, getting the moisture out of the depth of that garage. Okay, thank you, uh, you know that? My, uh. Previous someone had quite a. Elaborate setup on the floor, so that anyone getting out of their car wouldn't step in any water, plus you have a drain. The width of the garage, he could squeegee the water away, he had his floors sealed, to make it easier to squeegee the water away, so. And you will get condensation. Built up in there unless you have a, a heating heater or something.
There, there is a drain in the center of the just. Any other comments or questions or concern?
Gutter, um, do we need gutters on this? This building? We worried about runoff on the roof. Twenty-four feet, I think, we, we were talking.
I mean, there, there is still four feet of, you know, open land, green space between the building and the, and the property line, so. Um. You know, the, the building isn't so large that I think it's gonna create an issue, and. Only the back portion, the addition, will have a, a slope of the roof that will put water towards that side. The, the existing garage, it's front and back.
Oh.
So, um, you know. We could certainly, you know, at the time when he submits a, a zoning application to, to start construction. Um, if you feel that it's important, we could request that there's some type of a drainage plan for that. I don't know that this raises to that level that I normally would require that, but we certainly have the opportunity to, to do so if we feel it's needed.
Do we get involved with suppression systems, is that? Is that our?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, do we get involved with suppression systems, water? Uh, it's mentioned in the Little Harbor Club letter, uh, about this building having a suppression system, they're afraid of fires. Uh, and they're.
Yeah, so for anybody, I did pass out, we did receive a letter generally in support of the project from the Little Harbor Club, and they are the property owners directly to the north. Which would be the closest to this property, um, they did have a couple of points that they had potential concerns about. Um, but really. Their concerns, like you mentioned, with suppression system and whatnot, we don't get into any type of inspections or involvement with that, we leave that to the building department. Um, or the fire department for, for them to regulate and, and control what, whatever the types of things might be needed. And certainly, you know, he will be submitting a plan to the building department, and they will, you know, if there's going to be some plumbing upstairs, there'll be plumbing. Um, permits and, and inspections, mechanical potentially, um, and certainly, you know, building inspections. To make sure that it's all done appropriately to code, but, um, the Evan County Building Department would be the ones that would enforce that.
Any other?
My, my question was the same as Ron's, yeah. My question was the same as Ron's.
Now would be a good time for public input if there is any.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public, any question?
That's Chip Abrose, I walk in late, they're gonna be, uh, plumbing, I'm serious, we'll be looking, there'll be living combinations up there.
Um, there, there's a bathroom in the plans.
Yeah. Like an ADU.
Uh, it's, it's an office, is what I'm hoping to use, so, yeah.
And Chip, just to catch you up, we did talk about that, and Jeff is gonna go back and look at whatever conditions were imposed when it was originally built and zoned. And if there are any conditions there, then they would, of course, carry forward.
Okay.
I don't know if you can see it, but I did pull up the floor plan.
Yeah.
There's some.
Of the upstairs?
Yeah.
Middle or this right there?
The first floor here, middle is the second floor, and then there's the stair section just showing. You know, how that will access the second floor there. But we, we can see a small bathroom right here in this portion of the building on the second floor.
Well, it appears to me from what we have seen is that there is a practical deal, and I'm trying to go off my. Recollection of the point, but there is a practical difficulty, it is not self-created, it does not create. Any imposition on the neighbors who are in fact with some building code, we, uh, concerns. There's no impact, so I think that it's a justified application, anybody would like to make a. Motion?
Well, oh, well, I have to.
Practical difficulty, um, my concern is still that he's coming as, to us saying. That this is for a garage, he needs a two-car garage, which essentially he has room for a two-car garage. If he wants to justify the rest, I would prefer that he comes back with a justification for the whole two-story. Structure and let us consider that. Cause he does have room for, most of what I saw here was he doesn't have room for two cars.
In his letter.
In his letter, in his, yeah, in his letter, and I feel like. There is. There is another solution to this, if that's his whole concern, if his concern is future office space, I'd like to see justification for that in the letter. An application. Because these plans clearly indicate that that's what's going to happen.
I guess I'm not clear that that needs to be, I'm not, I'm just, I wasn't aware that that would need to be two different. Kinds of requests, you're probably right, but I never. I guess I haven't run into that before.
If it had been, if it had been called out in the original proposal.
If it had been mentioned in the original proposal, um. For the record, down the road, I would like to see justification that we considered the whole possibility. Like we did with the third, possible third-story project before, with, uh, you know, that was called out, there's. Possibility of making that third floor a livable, livable space, and we just said we can't, you know, you can't do that, was one of the conditions for that. Project, I'd like to see the whole justification for the whole project, that's my opinion.
Mine, mine too.
I like that.
Absolutely, yeah, that's. Agreed.
Oh, would you think we could handle that, Jeff? Oh, would you think we could handle that, Jeff?
Uh, we could, I think that that could be done through discussion tonight. If you if you feel like you wanna spend some time, really, it comes down to the justification of. Is there a practical difficulty? And I think that that portion falls into the the reasonable use section. Right? What what we're talking about a practical difficulty, the first part is that there's some physical problem with the site. Uh, we've it sounds like we've talked about that, the existing location of the garage. And the narrowness of the lot and the proximity of the garage to the home. Sounds like that's not really been contested too much. The second part is talking about. Um, asking for reasonable use, uh, right? Um, practical difficulty should be resolving that reasonable use.
Okay.
So, so the question then is, is what he's asking for with the addition to the garage. He's he's asking to be relieved from a practical difficulty to solve that reasonable use. So having the additional kind of space in the garage and space above. Um, is it normal in that neighborhood to have garages of that size?
Mm-hmm.
You know, i- in that surrounding area? So.
But but I'm I'm questioning, I get what you're saying and I. I understand the issue about the garage.
Mm-hmm.
I guess. Um, so that's, I mean, essentially the only reason we're asking for a variance for that is because. Of that four feet or however many feet that are existing, it's a variance are gonna be existing as you extend the building back. Right, I mean, you're gonna have to have, so that's really why we have to.
We're increasing the non-conformity.
Increasing the non-conformity for the garage. So, if that were granted just by itself. And then he decided he wanted to add the upstairs. That have to come to us again for another variance?
No, I get, let's.
I guess that's where I'm confused.
Well, let me change my my wording here, right? He's asking for reasonable use for uh variance to build an accessory building. Right? Not just a garage, accessory building. And is it reasonable in that neighborhood to have an accessory building that has a second floor? Is it reasonable for uh an accessory building to be of the size that he's requesting? The original building is twenty by twenty-four. He's asking for another twelve feet on the back, so going up to twenty-eight by thirty-six. Is that a reasonable size for an accessory building in that neighborhood?
And I did notice a couple of in the neighborhood next door, across the street, there are no garages and no, so. It's kind of a fifty-fifty.
Yeah.
Uh, there are some.
There are some, some of them are attached, so it it varies, um. You know, we can pull up some aerial photos if you if you wanna look at some neighborhoods, see. What you think if this is reasonable and its size and.
The question is, is it re- is it a reasonable request for the neighborhood?
Right. And then and then the second part, or the I guess third, is, is there, are there any reasonable alternatives? He's expressed the concern uh about the difficulty in adding the size width-wise.
Right.
And and that's why he's proposing to go depth-wise. So, but certainly you can have, you know, if you if you think of a reasonable alternative, well firstly. Is his request reasonable in what he's asking for? And that is the size of the finished garage, something that's appropriate? And then the second part is, is there another way that he could achieve that result that requires less of a variance? And I think having a discussion on those two points, the outcome should lead you to determine whether you feel it's appropriate to grant the variance or not.
What about um connecting with a roof? Is that allowed if he widened his uh garage and. Connected with a roof, like an overhang, is there something about that?
Building the addition onto the side of the home?
Well, just widening his garage. As it is, a little bit. If I know he can't get closer to the house, but he could possibly, if there's, if they're connected.
Hmm. It 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 gets difficult there. It it becomes a, you you add a whole other level to the project, um. We do have rules regarding accessory buildings need to be at least five feet away from uh other buildings. Um, we do have language that talks about when you have, you know, some type of a connection. You know, adding some type of a breezeway or something. We we have some language in the zoning code that allows for that. Um. There there might be some work from the applicant to put something together regarding how that could be done. If that's something that could be an alternative.
What was still refreshing my memory. My garage project, we had to have it set back and so much had be hanging off. If part of it's attached to the house, so much had to be. Unattached so that I could have that little wider basement. Could you go over that again? Because I can't quite remember what that rule was.
Will people have the site plan again so we can, so I can sh- show something as well? A typical thing that comes up is. Whether whether a building is considered part of the principal building or considered in a detached accessory structure. And it becomes important because the setbacks can change. Clearly, we have here, um, we can see. For the principal building, they have a side yard setback of fifteen feet, and that's this line here.
Good, Jeff.
I don't know why it does that. Um, there was a, there was a separate setback of ten feet for the accessory building. So if it's a detached accessory building, it can be five feet closer to the property line. The rule for determining whether an access, a building is considered part of the principal or a separate uh accessory building. Is how much of it is attached to the building? Um, what we look at. Sorry, I'm having trouble with the uh.
It's okay, here we go.
What we look at is the common wall of the of the potential building garage and the principal building. And if that common wall is fifty percent or greater shared between the two structures. Then the building is considered part of the principal building. If that common wall between the two of them is less than fifty percent. Then it's considered, still considered a detached accessory building. And it can come in, it can become important for discussion. You know, for setbacks and things like that. Um, so yeah, let's let's say that he was here to discuss, um, you know, adding some type of a breezeway connection. Then the width of that and how it connects the house with the garage could then determine whether that garage is still an accessory building. Or becomes part of the principal building. But that's, I think.
Still, you're gonna have the. Part of it that's gonna be, if he wants to expand, yeah.
But that would, that would basically, that would, because the setback would then change if it were part of the principal building. And he'd be, we'd be increasing the non-conformity because it'd be further.
And I think we did have one of these a couple of years ago that was that exact stair. We're kinda getting down a rabbit hole. Um, there was, there was a, there was a proposal that somebody brought in where they weren't changing the garage at all, but they were building. Uh, a breezeway that connected.
I remember that.
By adding that breezeway, it changed the garage to be part of the principal. And so that side setback, so this middle portion became uh non-compliant with the code. But again, we're getting, we're really getting into.
And this is where I I, and I'm sorry, maybe it's all, it's the words that are getting to me. If this were just a one-story addition to the back, we'd be dealing with an extension of the existing non-conformity. Period, right? If there were no other, if we're just talking about expanding it on the back, which is what Adam is asking for, correct?
Yeah, that's all we're, that's all we're talking about.
We're talking about, but the question has come up about the second floor, I think, and maybe I'm misunderstanding the question.
Is it a question of whether it's needed or?
No.
No, it sounds like it's a usage.
Yeah, I mean, these guys brought that up and that's why I'm trying to understand, yeah.
Are you asking me a question? I'm not sure what you're asking.
No, which is the the conversation is you, you, the way I interpret, the way I interpreted what said was. Because the habitable space above and on the second story, which is already there, but is being repurposed. Because it wasn't called out in the application, that's what you're concerned about.
Right, and I'm saying, so if that were eliminated, would you be okay?
Say it again.
So I guess is, if there weren't the second floor part of it, would you, would you be okay with it? The application as it is, I guess that's where my, I'm confused.
I mean, the application is for a a tandem garage, but there's all this living space above it and does that shoot us into?
If, but if it weren't, I guess the question would be if if it weren't, if 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 the purpose wasn't to finish it and make it habitable. If it were just going to be used for storage, would you then be okay with the with the increase in the non-conformity?
Yeah.
I think he'd be took the toilet out. That's usually an indication of future consideration, whether it be under his ownership or.
I'm just trying to understand the concern.
Yeah, I don't understand the concern that's.
Concept of needing a two-car garage, because I have a two-car garage. Um, with some modifications on the front, be able to get into it. Uh, as far as, you know, if he wants to finish the upstairs, what he's got, that's that's fine, but I'm. I'm not sure of the justification of pushing it out the back. They have a two-car garage because it's already there.
Well, that, I guess that's my question. Is the width. Adequate to park two cars right next to each other? Is that what you mean when you say in tandem? Or are you saying?
Means like, like front to back.
So you're saying front to back.
Currently can't park two cars side by side.
And and there's nothing in here that would change that side by side. You're talking front to back like this.
You put a wider garage door on there that you could park two side by side.
Um, I would have to modify my driveway in order to do that and. I would have to move the stairwell that's in the garage to the outside of the garage because the stairwell.
Right.
Is taking up the room.
Yeah.
And, you know, I I I do wanna just, I'm not trying to pull a fast one in any way. Uh, it is a consideration that I do gain twelve feet more of storage space. You know, I have things other than cars in my garage. I mean, that is, um, you know, I I I, it's one of the reasons I would like to, you know, push that garage back is to be able to. Cars and my other items that are that are currently in there. But, um, yes, on the question specifically, if you wanted to put two-car garage, two cars in there, you would need to. Change the front of the garage and get a garage door that I guess is double wide. I would need to repave or I would need to pave over the portion of my garage that's. Sort of near the porch there on the plan, that that is grass and gravel right now. Um, and there's a stairwell on the inside of the garage that is not on the plan, so. Um, then, you know, you would have to, I'd have to redo that floor over the top. Um, and then build a stairwell on the outside. Uh, in order to get two cars in the existing garage.
I know we've discussed this and, you know, I'm one person out of five. So if if everybody else feels like they are ready to vote, we can, I'm.
No, that's, it's not that. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding.
That's fine, yeah.
If if I rephrase, and tell me if my rephrasing doesn't state what you're trying to say. Um, is it that you're saying that a reasonable alternative would be that he could achieve. His request by adding an addition onto the first floor without adding anything onto the second floor? And then that would be a reasonable alternative to what he's proposing by adding that second floor? Um, or am I misstating what you're?
Yeah, yeah, you're missed.
Okay.
I would not be able to add anything closer to the house because of the five-foot rule.
Right.
Okay.
That is boxed in.
Yeah, I'm boxed, I'm boxed in on both sides, so, uh, if if I'm to expand the garage footprint in any way, the only way to do it. Is that.
And that, and I I understand that and that makes perfect sense to me. Um, and so while you're doing, and. Uh, one other question about the stairway, I, and if I misunderstood, I'm sorry. I thought you were indicating that you were gonna be moving the stairway anyway.
Uh, that is in this plan, yes. I was planning to do that.
Okay, so that in itself isn't gonna. That in itself isn't gonna prevent you, I I guess I'm not sure. How that affects the decision of the plan.
I would just add that, um, this garage is only twenty feet wide.
Okay.
Um, even if he put a wider door in and modified his driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he doesn't really have room to fit two cars side by side very well. Uh, but maybe if they were very small compact cars, but.
I'm sure people wedge them in there, but.
You know, twenty feet wide uh is ten feet per car, but you're losing. Up to eighteen inches of that width for the walls on the outside, so. It would be very narrow cars without.
You're trying to figure out what the framing you need for the, for the wider door. And again, if you had two smart cars, it wouldn't be a problem. But if you have two reasonable cars, I mean, you know, I I have a, I have a wide enough, I could picture this, that's all.
A a a typical two-car garage is twenty-four feet wide.
Got it.
Yeah. Uh, twenty-four by twenty-four or five hundred and seventy-six square feet is the general size for a two-car garage. Um, sometimes if you want a little bit more storage, maybe a little bit more depth. Uh, but that's generally the the width of the. You know, a reasonable, and that is something that the zoning code has specific language. Uh, you know, to basically talk about that, um, you know, someone will always be guaranteed. You know, at least five hundred and seventy-six square feet of the garage space for a two-car garage kind of a thing. There's, that's in a couple spaces.
Like I said, I don't have a problem with the extension going back. I'm not sure what the concern is about the second-story part of it. And so, why we would. I mean, we're not, it's not like the second story is gonna go out any further. So I guess that's my, is it just that it's not in that letter that of the application? That's the problem.
Living quarters, probably, you know, I mean. It's living quarters up there.
Yeah.
Adds a whole nother conversation to the.
If if he removed that, if he decided not to pursue the upstairs.
Mm-hmm.
We'd be ready to vote right now, would we not?
Well, I was ready to vote.
But I mean, if it's it's not in the paperwork. We're all, I think we're all kind of. In agreement with the extension on the back of the garage.
I guess perhaps I don't understand the issues regarding the accessory and the use of that. That I think is the question and.
And and I, I don't know. Know whether that's a zoning code thing or what, really don't know.
Yeah.
Again, in my mind, the question before the ZBA is. Does he have a practical difficulty that justifies increasing the non-conformity by. A small amount, what's what's the square, what the on a side, five by five, about forty-eight or fifty-six square feet?
That's what's. Twelve, it's twelve by whatever the distance over this existing setback, the existing garage.
So it's a small portion, I mean, and again, the drawing shows how much of the increase in non-conformity we're talking about. In my mind, that's what is in front of the ZBA. As far as the alternative, is it, one of the questions, is there a reasonable alternative? And in my mind, without going over and pacing it out and all that, I don't think that. Expanding it to two cars side by side is, given the volume you're dealing with, is practical. I wouldn't wanna do that if it were my building. As far as the use of upstairs, uh, if he just said it's gonna be storage space and then he could add a later date. Convert it. I don't.
Then he can do it at, if we approve it, he can do it at a later date. That's what Jeff told us.
Well, let's, let's, let's make sure that we, I wanna clarify something. Because we we can't make a decision for the wrong reasons. His proposed use of the first floor, second floor, any of part of that structure. Is not what we're here to discuss. Right? He could, if if he decided that he wanted to convert the first floor into living. And and not have even any garage, car storage on this, that's something. and, and not have even any garage, car storage on this, that's something that he can do, right? If, if he, if he came in and said, I'm gonna train monkeys to throw poop on the second floor, it, we don't care about that, right? What we have to base our decision on.
ZBA doesn't care about that.
The ZBA, the ZBA doesn't care about that, right? What we care about is, is the structure that he's asking for reasonable in comparison to the properties around him in its size? Right? Does it resolve potential practical difficulty issues with the property? So the if, if he's talking about, or if you're concerned about the fact that he might turn the upstairs, let's say that you were concerned that he was gonna turn it into an apartment and rent it out, right? That's not really, that's a concern for the planning commission.
Not the ZBA.
Not necessarily the ZBA. Um, you know, our concern should be how big are other garages in the neighborhood? Is, is it appropriate for us to approve a garage? And, and again, that, I should say accessory building, not garage, right? Um, first floor use, second floor use, right? Um, whether it's one story, one and a half stories, two stories. Um, you know, so that's the thing. Um, realistically, I guess the question would be if, would you have that same concern if this garage were five feet south and didn't need a variance at all? Would, would we have any concerns or issues over it? The, the concern is, is that he's asking for the, the side variance to be up in that area. So I'm not to say that you, you don't have valid concerns, but we have to have the right concerns at the ZBA. And if you feel that the, the project doesn't meet those reasonable use or reasonable alternative measures, that would be a reason that we would have concern for the project and request the applicant to come back with different information. Does that make sense?
That's the Pepsi challenge.
Now, just for clarity sake, if we, if we have a motion and it is, and it doesn't pass, what are the applica, what, what are the implications to the applicant?
Um, my, my first thought would be if, if you feel that there's a concern and you, and you feel that there's a reasonable alternative that you would pose, my recommendation would be that you express that to the applicant and maybe table the discussion so that he can prepare a modified.
Right, I've had it then.
Yeah. Um, if you do a motion and it doesn't pass, then essentially you have not received approval for the variance. At that point, your option would be to come back to the planning or to the ZBA with a dramatically different plan. Um, and that's where if you, if you feel that maybe he could slightly modify the plan, not taking action may be better.
If there's a pessimist.
Yeah. Um, but again, if, if the applicant is, you know, says, now I'd like to just have an answer on what I brought in today, then we have to make that decision.
Right.
But if you guys have a thought of, here's a way that the plan could be modified, that we would be more comfortable making a decision tonight, if he's open to that, then he could take, you guys could all table this and we could come back one month from now or two months from now, um, with a modified plan to, to relook at.
Does that answer your questions?
Well, actually Jeff answered it earlier, so.
Okay.
And, and I'm not trying to tell you what to do. I just want to make sure that we're deciding for the right reasons. Yeah.
You did answer, you did, you did. I don't know what words to use. You did set me straight, okay?
Oh, yeah.
I, I, as to the purpose, so.
Yeah.
I'm satisfied with what you had to say about five minutes ago.
All right.
This is actually a good discussion. So, does somebody want to make motion?
I, I, I move that we approve the variance as requested.
I'll second it.
I'll do a roll call on that. Jane Jenkins.
Yes.
Ron Turner.
Yes.
John Liam.
Yes.
Kathy Macho.
Yes.
Kim Morris.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all. All right.
Welcome.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for your patience.
I learned something tonight.
Yeah.
This is what I like about the ZBA, they're all corner cases. You have to talk about them and understand the code and one of the hardest things to do is what is our role? If we can get into uses and all this stuff and that's like, that's very interesting, that's planning.
Yeah.
Well, without any, unless there's anything else you guys want to talk about, um, John, you can.